Good evening. I'm going to, at this time, call to order a special meeting of the Arvada Housing Authority. Kristen Rush, if you'll call the role. Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Fieker.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Mormon.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
This meeting was called as a special meeting to address an issue of new business. I sent out an email in compliance with Colorado statute to comply with calling the special meeting. I received responses from all of my fellow council members indicating their agreement to move forward and to have notice of this special meeting, so we can proceed with that at this time. Ms. Morris, do you want to explain what we're doing here tonight?
I will.
First of all, is there any public comment to the Housing Authority? Did not, and we have no one on Zoom. Very good. Go ahead, Ms. Morris.
We are here tonight to have the authority consider Resolution RHA 22-01, and it's a resolution where we're requesting that the Housing Authority delegate approval authority to the chairperson for certain documents necessary for the refinance of the CastleGate Apartments. As you are aware, the Arvada Housing Authority has a 0.01% ownership interest in CastleGate LLP. The general partner, CastleGate LLC, has decided to buy out the other members of the limited liability partnership. In order to obtain funds sufficient to buy out the other partners, CastleGate LLC has applied to refinance the loan on the CastleGate property. In order to be approved for the new loan, Freddie Mac requires various information from the Housing Authority, including a credit check, list of assets and net worth, and a list of current real estate. Additionally, the Housing Authority needs to execute an amended partnership agreement to reflect the changes to the LLP's membership. Tonight, staff is asking the authority to delegate the power to execute all documents necessary for the refinance to Chairperson Mark Williams. The reason that we're requesting the delegation of authority is to ensure that we can get all the necessary documentation to Freddie Mac by the required deadlines. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the resolution to the authority.
Open it up for council question, or sorry, for Housing Authority questions or motion. If I could have someone.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott. And let me explain why Mr. Marriott is not with us here tonight. I meant to do that earlier, and we'll do it during the council meeting as well, and why we are sitting up here unmasked at this time. We went to the Public Health Authority, the Public, Jefferson County Department of Public Health, and sought an exemption so that we could continue to meet in public, unmasked, so that our citizens could see our faces while we're conducting their business. And it requires that we be fully vaccinated and that we have done that. It requires 95% to be vaccinated. Mr. Marriott has natural immunity because he has had COVID. However, that is not sufficient with the current public health orders, and as such, he is chosen so that the rest of us could be present in person, unmasked. He has graciously agreed to, for the time being, to be remote. Mr. Jones, on the other hand, has a persistent cold and cough and didn't want to subject all of us to that tonight and send false thoughts out to everyone, so that is why he is remote as well. So with that, Mr. Marriott, if you'll make your motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the Housing Authority delegate its power to the chairperson of the Housing Authority, that being Mayor Williams, to execute all documents necessary for the refinance of the CastleGate Apartments property.
And technically, that would be for the chair of the Housing Authority, not in my role as mayor.
Right.
Okay. Any questions on that? Those in favor of the motion, please vote. And Mr. Marriott, how do you vote on your motion?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And the other five of us have voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. Thank you for giving me that authority. I've indicated that it will be used sparingly and only after consultation with the city team. With that, do we have any other business to come before the Housing Authority?
We do not.
Okay, I will declare that meeting adjourned, and now we'll switch hats, and we will convene now, and I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for January 24, 2022, and call upon Councilmember Smith to give us the initial start here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'll call upon Kristen Rush for roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fieker.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And for the record, I'll indicate that Mr. Jones and Mr. Marriott are appearing remotely. Mr. Jones, because of a persistent cough and wanting to not have to, so that he can mute himself at the appropriate times if need be. And Mr. Marriott, that although he has natural immunities to the COVID, as a result of having had COVID, is not, at this point in time, in the compliance requirements of the Public Health Department to be able to be with us here tonight, unmasked. So with that, we have the minutes of January 3, 2022. Any changes or corrections to those? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Lauren Simpson for our recognition tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We were planning to have this before the holiday season, but with the holidays and Omicron, we're just very grateful that we're able to do it now. Tonight, we'll be recognizing a truly phenomenal member of our community for the work that she has done, and it's my honor to get to do this. So, we are recognizing Shelley Long, who is the Northwest Metro Business and Professional Women's Organization Woman of the Year for 2021. Shelley is a Colorado native, a pastor, an advocate, a business owner, an artist, a Realtor, a wife, and also a wife to a wonderful pastor and blessed mom to four grown children. Man, I thought I was busy. Shelley and her husband Rick, along with a good friend, started Grace Church of Arvada in 1989, where they are both still serving the people today. Rick is the lead pastor, and Shelley has served and volunteered in many areas, from the children's ministry, to the worship experience, to teaching and counseling, and empowering others to see their value and use their gifts. Shelley is currently the pastor and director of REACH, overseeing all outreach, working to serve those hurting and in need of the community around us. In 2016, Shelley also founded One By One Helping Arvada Homeless, to help those without homes find their stability again through their hard work, accountability, and the outpouring of generosity through community by providing resources and encouragement to them. Shelley founded One By One as a Facebook group, originally to share the stories and resources for homeless individuals. Her plan was to create a community for information and sharing. However, it ended up that people were joining to ask for help, and others were joining to ask how they could help her. Today, there are over 2,400 people in the group, I'm one of them, both of those in, both those in need of help and those wanting to help, and their mission is to provide hope and opportunity for stability to those who are homeless on the streets of Arvada. In 2020, the group raised and paid for 322 hotel nights for 71 different individuals, costing nearly $20,000 to get people in shelter on severe weather nights and possibly save their lives. COVID has changed the world and created challenges in a way that they were able to meet, interact with people. They are now launching a new effort through the REACH team at Grace Community Church to create a community center that will allow them to increase the efforts of One By One. The city council would like to thank Shelley for her work in our community and present her with a certificate of recognition. Much well deserved.
You'll come down to the podium. And Lauren will bring you the proclamation, and certainly you can say a few words. And photographs are always welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, another tall girl. I'm so happy.
Thank you. I am very grateful and thankful and feel very undeserving, honestly. There's so many amazing organizations in our community and people that are doing so much more, but it's a, it's a privilege to get to meet people on this level and just see the power of people improving their lives. I just did a training with some of our money mentors. We're starting a new program where we have people in financial avenues who are volunteering their time to teach people how to budget and how to get back on top. And sometimes that includes us infusing money into their lives to help them overcome hardship that they can't get past and get back on top. And sometimes it's, it's simply providing them with the resources and knowledge. And one of the families we just met with yesterday is an example of this amazing ministry in One By One. They were both homeless. They were living in a broken-down van at 64th and Sheridan in the King Supers parking lot. She was clean two weeks from a pretty extensive meth addiction. He'd been in and out of prison 11 times for various drug felonies. And fast forward, they're clean, they own their own business, a towing company. They've remodeled a coachman that they live in on his parents' property. They had $30,000 in the bank from all of the principles that they learned through One By One and this budgeting process. They paid off all of their bills, his court fines. They both work consistently, and it's a, it's a tearful thing to sit and watch people by their own hard work and a little bit of encouragement from the community step forward and make those kinds of dramatic changes. And we get to see that over and over. And it's, it's humbling to stand beside somebody who's made such drastic changes. So, our goal is whatever it takes to take the next step to thrive and help them find their stability. So I could tell you story after story, but I'm honestly on the side of being blessed more than blessing others, because you get to see those cool stories. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your hard work and for sharing that very, that's a great success story, and that's what keeps us going, are those kinds of success stories. So thank you so much. With that, now, we have a presentation on the information on the RTD's transit service optimization, yeah, the plan to optimize what they're doing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I have with me, I'm John Ferruzzi, the manager of the Mobility and Planning Innovations Division of Arvada Public Works. I have with me Derek Fern. He's our Parking and Travel Demand Management Coordinator, as well as Director Cook from RTD as well, and members of our Transportation Committee. If you don't mind all standing up, please. Thank you. We are here to provide you with an update related to Reimagine RTD, a process that RTD has been going through for a couple of years now. And in doing so, we will be going through some of the information that they have provided, as well as our feedback, to help keep you informed as they're going through a public process. Next slide, please. All right, so the reimagine process is basically a process that has been established on several policy-level principles. That includes mobility, equity, financial partnerships, workforce, and sustainability. And from that foundation, they have moved into what's known as a Service Optimization Plan to design their bus services. And the objectives of those are simplification, consistency, and reliability. To provide you a little background and history as to how things got to where they're at with this process, I'd like to invite Director Cook to provide that background information.
Thank you all very much for having me, and thanks to John for preparing this and Derek, and also to the Transportation Committee. They've provided many good thoughts for the work that we're doing. John asked me to provide backup, and some of you are familiar with this, so forgive me, but just to get us all onto the same page. It has to start with FastTrax. Of course, the ballot issue passed in 2004, very ambitious, 122 miles of new rail, bus rapid transit, feeder service that complements all that, passed by voters by a pretty good margin. It hit a double whammy pretty early on. I mean, first thing was materials costs that soared with growth, burgeoning growth in the world, like in China and India, drove up costs like for steel, things that we would need plenty of. And then came the Great Recession. The stock market crashed, you know, from 2008, '09 in that timeframe. And it became clear pretty clearly, or pretty early on, that RTD, the plan could not be built out in the timeframe and in the manner expected and put forward to voters. So, the mantra adopted by the agency and its board at the time was, build as much as we can, as fast as we can, until it's all done. And I got to say, the agency demonstrated real creativity. For example, the PentaP program that made possible the Eagle Project, including our Gold Line, that's just one example. And I need to stress that without that creativity in that program in particular, I don't think we'd have the G-line today. And the success of that program then attracted proposals for other lines, like the N-line and the R-line, and was, and actually helped to make possible construction of a good portion of the system. But it was a big stretch. And by 2018 or 2019, it was getting increasingly clear that the agency was overcapitalized, had assumed too much debt, had been deferring important maintenance in order to make that mantra come true. So, on top of all that, like most transit agencies, we were seeing big declines in ridership across the system, and that was even with the added lines that had been added, I mean, that had come online at that point. So, you know, already big challenges, and then, of course, the pandemic hit. So it's in that environment that we launched, paused, and then restarted Reimagine. And it's an effort to redesign and reposition the agency and the services given a pretty daunting set of constraints. So what's coming forward now is the System Optimization Plan, the SOP as it's called. It reflects a commitment over time, starting this fall, and by the way, not May, that was delayed, but starting this fall and continuing through 2027. And the idea is to bring the current level of 70% service up to a new base of 80%, 85%. That's measuring by service miles and, or service hours, excuse me. That 85% in a nutshell is what the CEO and CFO consider viable, given long-term lower revenue estimates, substantially higher operating costs, and a restored maintenance program, a state of good repair. And it's possible, by the way, only once workforce issues that we, like many industries, are facing are resolved, are faced and resolved. So, I, John will talk about this a little bit. The new plan, it's kind of a base service-level plan. It also employs an equity lens, reflecting especially the importance of transit for essential workers and larger numbers of people that we now know and saw with the pandemic shutdown are completely reliant on transit to get to work, for shopping, medical appointments, and more. Now, by the way, during that pandemic shutdown, total lockdown, only essential workers out, 139,000 trips a day on transit. That just gives you an idea how many people who are in essential jobs who rely on transit. But the SOP is not, is not the only part of First Reimagine. It's the first half. And the second half is called the Mobility Plan for the Future, and that will hopefully enable the larger potential for transit and public transfer, excuse me, transportation that I and many see. It's how we take advantage of technology, put into place first and last mile approaches, like you're doing with Bird, facilitate community circulators, maybe use vouchers, all that sort of thing, all to expand access and ridership and extend service to people in places like West and Northwest Arvada. But that outcome is just not assured, and John's presentation includes a recommendation about growing, about adopting a growth mindset. And I wholly agree. In my view, the system we need for the future will require RTD to put in place, among other measures, a robust and effective need, or effective framework for partnerships, and especially to attach meaningful and ongoing dollars to it. So, it will also depend on a proactive state and region, and on municipalities and counties, TMA's, transportation companies, nonprofits, and more, who can bring to the table their own ideas, initiatives, and resources. So I'm here tonight to listen to you and be as ready as I can and to take forward your thoughts, try to carry your weight on your conclusions about John's analysis and the particulars of the SOP, the process, the draft provisions for fixed route services, mobility on demand, if you'd like to see that in the northwest area, some flex ride service. But if there's time, I'd also hope you'd share your thoughts for transit service in the broader context of mobility and the Mobility Plan for the Future, because this will help me, as we on the board, take up both, both aspects, the SOP and the Mobility Plan. And I would also urge you to formalize your input for the agency's consideration, including what you see as your role going forward in correspondence to us, to the GM, CEO, and to the Reimagine team, and they want that by February 9. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Cook.
So with that, we'd like to move into the next slide, please. All right, so as Director Cook pointed out, this is a process that has come about over a period of time, and we have arrived at the reimagine process. We have community representatives. We, there are advisory members, as well as stakeholder members, and we're involved in the process in terms of bringing feedback and input from the representation on the reimagine process. Next slide. Okay, so the crux of the project really relies on a framework that is considering rebuilding service. And in doing so, without getting into the nitty-gritty of what is discussed here, the idea is that basically service and resources are finite, that they need to be prioritized, and in doing so, there are certain impacts from telework and other things that have happened, and that, as Director Cook pointed out, the goal is to reach 85% pre-pandemic service hours through 2027. We have identified that while these are lenses that should be used to view the technical document, that one item that should be considered moving forward is also a growth mindset. And to do that, really bringing in together partners is key in that process. Next slide. Okay, and with this, what we have is basically what is being proposed with that 2027 Service Optimization Network. Derek will be talking to that here, related to how this is planned and how it affects our community.
Good evening, members of council. So, as you see here, the 2027 SOP network, it's a pretty high-level view here of the four core connect, commute, and community service lines. And although we agree with the typology and the categorization of these service types, the plan leaves a majority of Arvada residents without service, much like we do today. So despite our agreement with the category of connect, as you see, most of Arvada there is orange, the plan doesn't go far enough into our arterials to offer better service to our communities. The community routes divert into our neighborhoods, leaving our arterials much, without much-needed service. So the overall plan continues a system that operates as a hub-and-spoke distribution model. Next slide.
The reason why we are seeing the current results, the way they're framed, is because the majority of the focus is on the Title VI equity policy and focus of the plan. And part of the issue here is that as the plan moves forward, we'd like to see more of the other elements of the principles being carried through throughout the process, that while we understand that this is a key component, that it should be included, that there are other components that need to also move forward. And in doing so, the current plan really focuses in on the requirement and where, in terms of the census data, where people are living. And for Title VI, the low-income as well as minority groups have been mapped out throughout the RTD plan, and that has been part of the analysis that we've been looking at. And we think that that's perhaps not the best way to move forward, because as a fatal flaw, the document identifies where people live, but not where their destinations are and where they might travel to for jobs or for other purposes. Next slide. Yeah, so like, this is an example of the route-level analysis showing the census information that has been used to develop the current model. This is where the low-income and minority elements are dominant, for example, in this particular corridor. And while bus service is modeled after that, again, it does not reflect the destinations where people travel to. Next slide. So the result of the document with the way it's currently shown is that Arvada is projected to have less transit service, especially fixed route buses on arterials and highways that serve the city. And while our land-use patterns for suburban communities, especially as we start to move west and northwest, do not necessarily support fixed route bus service in the current form, however, there are some alternatives that we're going to be discussing here, that a combination of fixed routes and these alternatives could help provide transit. Next slide. So, so far, just kind of recapping real quick, we have looked at the guiding principles, and we agree with the guiding principles of reimagine RTD, that they're strong, but they need to be applied throughout the process and plan. The Service Optimization Plan that we agree with with resource management, but disagree with the design as it's currently shown. There are elements of this that need to be reconfigured and reconsidered with some creativity. And there are also pieces related to community input and public process that we're wanting to bring up and display. Would you like to speak to those?
So, over the course of drafting the SOP, some updates to the final draft plan as it sits now did include some of the advisory committee input. So, but essentially, fundamentally, it's the same plan. And furthermore, the public process is where, personally, I feel like there is an issue, and I think it does affect a lot of our riders. One of the biggest concerns that we have is that, is how the feedback is being implemented. First of all, the web-based geographic information, or GIS, webpage opened for public comment on January 13. And it was also on this date that our, many of our Transportation Advisory Committee members, as well as some members of council and myself, were on a call with RTD, the Northwest Stakeholder Listening Session. And it was on the same date that, at that time, I believe that's still the date, it's only open until February 9. So, less than a month of public feedback. And a major issue that we have with this process is that it's simply not the limited time allotted, but also how it is being rolled out in a web-based fashion, which would, you know, in Arvada, where we have an aging community, they might not have access to internet or, you know, basic understanding of how to navigate a webpage, especially one as complex using GIS data. So, that is where we're at. Thank you.
So that's to say, basically, that we think the public process could be more robust, and that essentially, with, with the process moving at the pace it's moving, it doesn't really allow for the opportunity to incorporate all the voices and feedback, use that information to come back out to the public to show how that is integrated into the new plan, and then move ahead into and then move ahead into the rest of the RTD process. Next slide, please. All right, and to also recap, we are interested in seeing a growth mindset in terms of the comments that we provided to RTD from the City of Arvada staff perspective, that we think there are opportunities for partnership. We think that this is something that could be essentially reimagined. The current hub-and-spoke system that we have hasn't worked that great for suburban community. That's something else for the community here could be considered. And again, that process, in terms of how we want public information to be accepted, documented, and shown, to help boost confidence, is a key element of the RTD process. These are part of the recommendations that we've provided to RTD staff as part of the reimagine process. One of the other key elements here is also that we are asking RTD to look at our local transportation planning documents. We have gone through the process of considering transit as part of our multimodal transportation system. And if we're going to address traffic congestion, if we're going to address transportation sustainability, if we're going to address ADA and building infrastructure along our corridors through bond projects and sidewalks and bike lanes, that without the transit piece, that these are not going to really work together, that we have to have that coordination between RTD and the city. Next slide. To just jump into a couple of specifics and help highlight a couple of the proposal issues, I want to point to both Route 52 and 72 that are currently proposed in the format that you see. Here with Route 52, the decision to shorten the route is something that is a result of the process. However, in this particular case, we've commented that this basically parallels the G Line. And if it's a matter of resource management, perhaps reallocating that resource elsewhere for a fixed bus ride makes a lot of sense. Similarly, with Route 72, one of the key issues here is that the routes tend to follow the arterial names, for example, West Seventy Second Avenue. As it enters, Route 72 enters Arvada, it dibs down towards Old Town, it dips and meanders through neighborhoods, and then pops back out onto 64th. We think these fixed routes, especially from the public psyche perspective, if there are arterials that are direct and the numbers and names match, it'll help encourage transit ridership by keeping it simple. And that goes to one of their priorities as, their objectives, as part of the simplification of the system. One key thing to note in this particular case is that you'll notice Ralston Road in the core section does not show transit service. We find this as a major concern, especially after the initial phase of Ralston Road getting completed, and now we're on to a second phase with the bond project. Major reinvestments are going in for Ralston Road. And not having a bus route on a arterial is really not how we've been planning and working around these particular issues. The same is true also for West Seventy Second Avenue. A lot of investment is going in on the bond project there, too. Next slide. So one door that RTD has left open, and we think this is a good time to take advantage and consider an opportunity, is what's known as mobility on demand or flex ride in some circles. Basically, what you'll see there is that the red highlighted areas of Metro Denver show flex ride or mobility on service as part of the reimagine process and the service optimization plan. While that door is open for Arvada, the service is really not shown on the map. And I think this gives us an opportunity, as we comment, and we have, in fact, proposed mobility on demand and flex ride service, for especially Central and West Arvada to provide connectivity to high ridership or higher ridership routes, like the G Line or the highways such as Sheridan and Wadsworth. So this is part of the comments and the feedback that we're providing, that while in the current plans and the numbers, they may not make sense currently, building that service, to rebuild the service, we really need to have something in place to get people moving in that direction over time, build that service. Next slide. This is Arvada's Transit Enhancement Plan from the 2014 Comprehensive Plan. And as you can see here, in our version of what we proposed, and mind you, this is from 2014, 2013, in that vicinity, we are showing RTD service that runs on most major arterials in the city. And on top of that, we are showing essentially where our growth and jobs, those are the darker pink colors, the red colors that you're seeing there, where the jobs are and where transit should follow along the corridors to help serve connectivity to and from the overall system to these job sites. We have, as part of our efforts, and we're now reaching build-out of the city, we've been considering transit as part of the transportation plan. And while this is a city proposal, we would like to see this considered as part of the reimagine process. So we're taking that information to RTD. Next slide. And finally, as part of the modeling that we've done for our future improvement needs in our transportation plan, what you'll see there is basically the green highlights that show where we're maxed out in capacity, that we can't build additional lanes on these roads to increase the capacity, and we're reaching that capacity for traffic congestion currently. So the need for transit and the movement of people versus cars is critical along those corridors such as Sheridan, Wadsworth, Ralston Road, Kipling, even as central as Sims. And then the orange lines essentially show where we're building capacity. And that's where we're widening roadways from two lanes to four lanes and adding the bike and pet infrastructure. And those are also on our arterial system investments that we have planned and we're working on to build out. We see these as opportunities to have RTD service, planning, and connectivity between the local plan and the reimagine plan. And that was part of our feedback to RTD here. So with that, to just kind of give you an overview of the comments that we've provided, the feedback that we've provided, and the coordination that we're interested in, and obviously Director Cook is here with us, and the Transportation Committee is here with us, we're trying to bring RTD to the table. They have committed to visit us on Wednesday as part of a Transportation Committee meeting. And we will be, continue to express the interest for collaboration and partnerships. I definitely wanted to open this up as part of an update for any kind of questions and help answer any concerns that council may have.
Very good. Either Mr. Marriott or Mr. Jones, do you have anything at this time? You'd like to inquire?
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Ferruzzi, if you don't mind. I saw that part of your presentation where you talked about, I think it's the 72 or 76 and the interaction with the 52 bus. And the current plan continues to not have any service along Ralston Road? Is that actually still correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so I'm assuming that that's going to be part of our feedback to RTD is that we might prefer that those buses, rather than weaving around residential neighborhoods, might be on the arterials where we expect that they will be. And whereas, part of the Ralston Road project, we've built some infrastructure specifically for having buses there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, anything from you at this time?
No, I think, I mean, again, I think, you know, looking at this and, you know, the services that are kind of west of Ward Road, and I know that there's not a lot of service currently available today, and it doesn't appear as though there's, you know, really any projected service that's sustainable for the type being. So I don't know how to solve for that at this point, other than to encourage people to drive, you know, down toward Road and, you know, park, you know, at the line, at the hub there, or to Old Town. So it's just about getting people from the west side to those transportation corridors.
Okay, and here, Mr. Pfeiffer, you graciously volunteered to be a major role player in this. Your thoughts or questions?
You know, let me let the other, if you don't mind, Mayor.
That's fine. You'll defer.
Yeah, I'll defer to the end.
Very good. Mr. Morin?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your presentation this evening and the work that you've done, and the committee really appreciate your work on this. I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, can you explain to me a little bit more about the mobility on demand and the flex ride and how that works? I mean, I'm most familiar with Accessa Ride and using that, but it can be frustrating, in that you can wait for hours to, you know, and then hours to get to where you need to be through that service. So I'd like to understand more how this works and how it might be improved upon.
Sure, yeah. So the way that it's designed is usually there's a service area that a flex ride would serve. And this particular area would be based on information that comes in where the demand is. And in most cases nowadays, computers and AI is helping model the routes, the most efficient ways to pick people up and drop people off. The traditional flex ride is more geared on calls, and there's a center, if you will, that provides the call and directs the transit service to that particular location. But nowadays, yes, it's computers that does that. And really, the idea is that depending on where the demand is, the model is basically finding the most efficient routes to connect people from where they are to where they want to go.
And is there, or has there been survey data collected in Arvada of commuters that are either coming to Arvada to work or leaving Arvada to go to a place of work? And is that data being utilized in planning a system like this?
I'm not aware of how RTD is surveying commuters. I know they do use data and information to essentially model that demand. The focus, however, that they have emphasized is basically where the demand would be originating from. And it's not where folks are going to. And therefore, I think part of our feedback to RTD is that we'd like to kind of see how that origin destination information would work, especially with the destination in mind.
Great, thank you. Well, I just want to finish by saying, again, I appreciate this. And my question then is, how can we help you in advocating for these important issues for us as our city? So I participated on the January 15th stakeholder session and did add some comments to that. And so I want to continue advocating for our city on this issue. So please let me know how else I can help.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So actually, Councilmember Morem and got a little bit to the point that I was coming to with my first thought, which is the Route 52 proposed alignment. So you mentioned using data to connect destination points with points of origin. So my first initial thought when looking at Route 52 is you take a turn on Tennyson, but then you get off it before you get to the good fun part of Tennyson. I can't help but think, why are we missing the natural alignment of Tennyson Street to Old Town? And that seems like it would be, like, that's a huge community hub down there in Denver, as well as up here. And they seem like very natural complementary points where people would trade for shopping, for dinner, for activities, and get them out of their cars. Parking in Tennyson is a pain in the booty, if anyone has done it lately. So just thinking about those destination and origin connections, obviously, we always go to downtown, Civic Center Station is here, Union Station's here. That's great. But that was just something that occurred to me, is like, 38th Avenue and Tennyson is easily the most attractive location in between Old Town and Union Station. So why are we missing that? So that was just sort of my first thought. And then my second thought, actually, this call-and-ride circulator, this is something that I talked a lot about in 2019 when I was on the campaign trail. Long before I lived in Arvada, I went to grad school in DC. And one of the very coolest things they have in DC is the circulator bus, where people like me who don't have a car can hop on. It's a very upscale bus. It's not your standard city bus. And it connects all the major tourist attractions around the city. And it's also the only way to get to Georgetown, because the train doesn't go to Georgetown. So I'm very curious about this call-and-ride circulator. I see it hits Old Town and our train lines, as well as perhaps that's the Arvada Center? Can you tell me a little bit about this?
Yes. Yeah, so the way it was originally envisioned is more of a high-level document from our end that we would basically identify some of the locations, destinations that folks might travel to within an area of Arvada. And obviously, in terms of connectivity to the overall transit system, it would connect to G Line stations or major bus routes on arterials and highways. So that is something that I think we have also developed a similar vision about having a robust flex ride, mobility on demand, whatever, you know, it's called, that provides that functionality that, at the end of the day, provides those connections. If it's attractive, and that goes part of the growth mindset, I think it'll bring more people to the table to ride that kind of service. If it's efficient, it's going to provide higher ridership. And that's really what RTD is after with rebuilding their service. So we're actually interested in that from, again, a high level. We haven't identified a specific route, knowing that back in 2014 to, you know, 2021, 2022, things do change, and that we would provide some flexibility in how that's planned out.
Okay, I actually really love this idea, and I'm excited to see it pursued and where it could go. I love the idea of being able to connect Red Rocks, Old Town, Arvada Center. And I would potentially even say we should look, or at least explore developing, because as to Mr. Jones's point, we don't have a lot of service on the west side. But we do have some very interesting things in the Pipeline Colorado Tap House. We've got the development at Candellas. This might be an interesting means, if there was either a second circulator area, that might be able to connect some of those on the west side to these stop points, where then they can hop on either the RTD G Line train or the second circulator to get to the east side attractions. So, thank you, guys.
Appreciate that.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, first, I just wanted to thank all of the transportation team over here. I think it's sometimes exhausting what you're doing, and I appreciate it. And sometimes you don't get enough gratitude, so thank you. I also wanted, just to hammer a little bit on the stakeholder engagement, I was on that call on January 15th. And to your point of it being such a short, not even a month maybe, of feedback, and it being very tech-heavy and having to submit online, it really limits to what we're actually getting for feedback. And I think we're really missing a lot of the people that use it on a daily basis. It kind of reminds me, when I was a case manager, when we would ask for feedback for our Medicaid clients, a lot of them were exhausted and not participating in our surveys that we were sending out. So I think we could probably explore some of that stakeholder engagement and really get to the nitty-gritty of what they actually need and use. To Councilmember Marriott's point, keeping things on the main street seemed to make more sense than leaving in and out, and people know where to go. The other thing was, you said something about Route 52 and how it kind of goes parallel with the G Line. Has there been kind of overlay studies on route versus, rail versus bus? Because if that was the case, then it wouldn't have that kind of parallel.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think that's a good question to ask from RTD. And we do have a plan to talk to them on Wednesday at the Transportation Committee, so we can certainly ask that question. Typically, these models are generated from software where they're modeling the land use, they're modeling jobs, they're modeling, you know, a number of different factors. And this particular one, this route that has been shown, was something that we were curious about as well. So it's something that we need to ask and really find out how they arrived at that particular proposal.
And just lastly, if you were to look at the best way to engage some of those riders to get their feedback, what would you see as the most effective means of communicating to them?
Yeah, I think we certainly have an aging population in what they call the captive market, is essentially people that are dependent on transit. And to, you know, set the barrier or set the plan when it comes to public process with what we think as barriers, you have to have a computer, you have to be able to know where to go, you have to navigate to a public GIS, public process webpage, get on a GIS map, and then provide comment, that it definitely, you know, could be and should be easier to access, and especially for folks that may not have the capability of jumping on a computer to do so. So that's actually part of the feedback we're providing, is that this shouldn't be just a computer, online-based process, that maybe additional meetings, slowing things down a little bit, trying to figure out what the comments are, incorporating it and coming back out and demonstrating how they're fitting into the overall process, is a key component. That could very much be, you know, at various events, or it could be at public open houses that RTD can hold.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer. Now it's your turn.
My blood boils on this one. So I'm going to try to hold it together.
Mr. Pfeiffer, your blood's been boiling a lot.
This one's worse.
Uh-oh.
So first and foremost, Director Cook, nothing I say is against you at all. I think you're probably the largest advocate for our community as long as we've known you and you set up here. So, you know... So, you know, please take everything I say and champion it back to the rest of your board. Because I have so many thoughts that I want to share with my councilmember and the public around this. I was trying to think of a way to, to not let my, my passion take over the conversation so much that you can't follow me, which that does happen once in a while. But let's break it up into some, some bite-sized issues here. One is, let, let's start with first, the process itself, reimagine. I know the mayor and I arm wrestled to get on there, what, two years ago? It was two years ago, right? And it was off and on and off and on and off and on. And I mean, it was before COVID hit, and there was probably, I don't know, 60, 70 of us in a room. You don't get a bunch of elected folks and high-level people in there and think you're going to, who think you're going to come out of something great out of it, because there's a lot of people. So the net might have been too big. I will cut straight to the chase. I believe their consultant is the tail wagging the dog. I've always felt that from every time I've sat in every meeting. In fact, the participation levels declined dramatically when some of us felt we were not being listened to. Funny enough, we're still talking about that two years later, that we still don't feel that we're being listened to. Holly specifically, I'll call her out specifically, the CEO of the, the company that RTD hired, makes people feel as if now, now let me pat you on the head, good job, I don't want to hear you anymore, next. And, and she needs to knock that off. So I think that the, the consultant is the tail wagging the dog on this conversation. Here's why. They, they used some data around cell phones, to answer your question. They use data off of cell phones, which is probably good data. But if you don't understand the data you're looking at and understand how it is derived and what does it mean, you're going to come to some conclusions that may mislead you. And the consultants really did try to drive this whole, well, look at, these are all where the cell phones are. Let's just follow where all the little dots go across the metro area. Well, what that, what that behavior did is didn't look at the streets, like we talk about Ralston Road. It started ironing out like residential roads to get bus traffic, which maybe that's the case. But maybe those dots are dots that don't ride buses. It also disqualified our community. I think it hurt our community in some aspects. And, and, and if you look at the map, there's a map on here where the furthest west we go is Ward Road and, and 64th. And, and the other bus line is, I think Wadsworth goes up and down still. And then there's the 52, which is just up into Old Town and then back down south. So it just comes in for a little bit. That's really the bus service we have, maybe shared in north and south. Well, we, I didn't see the, the old, what is it, the 86 Parkway one that went up there? I think it made a loop, it came back. That's gone. The one that, if you recall, some of you may recall, I advocated with Lorraine Anderson, who was the RTD director, on when they were eliminating one of our routes. We did a route from West Woods through Ward down to Red Rocks, Lakewood, and it went by all the shopping. And what was unique about that is it connected the W line and the goal line. And it was a north-south route, which you don't see that in there. And it connected our west at least to a drop, a drop-off point at Ward Road Station. That's gone, shot. That was probably the most effective line in my eyes.
Route 125.
Yeah, and, and, and shot. And so when you're up there advocating in front of this consultant, you're, you're going to go on deaf ears. You're seeing it very clear right now with this consultant, the way the public process is being held, it doesn't really give two cents credit to any, any constituent, any public, any city. Everything we say here, I'll tell you, it will be on deaf ears. It will, we will not make any movement whatsoever. I'll be, I'll be there on Wednesday night. I'll be listening to everyone that shows up and talking to them as well. But strongly, I think that this, this, this bus is gone. And, and there is no, no more fixing it for, for us in RTD. Now, what does, what does that tell me? Well, let's see. I'm the fifth-largest city in the, in the metro district. I have the least amount of bus service. But yet I have the constituency that could actually fund it without subsidizing it. I have the constituency that's very interested in environmental advocacy and using mass transit, but yet they don't get a bus. You also look at, we're reinvesting in all parts of our infrastructure, and they didn't weigh that in at all with, with their routes. We are spending how much money on Ralston Road to widen the lanes, put eight-foot sidewalks in, put accessibility, and then they're just going to shut the bus off? It's just like when we tried to put a bus, I think Lorraine was working on one where we were trying to get a bus on Balsam, I think. Balsam and 52nd. And the reason they wouldn't do a bus down that way is because we didn't have sidewalks down the road. Well, I think we put in sidewalks, and then there's no bus. So we keep investing into our infrastructure to support it, and it keeps going away. You know, John, you and your team, you've been very nice in your words. I, I wish you just threw some other words in there with it. Because I think that this, this problem needs to be taken serious to that RTD board. If they don't want to hear our opinion, don't even talk to us. Don't even waste my time. Don't come and talk to us if you don't want to hear our opinions. I'm at the point where I've asked Mr. Devon, but I have a way to do this now, is in our strategic meeting, we need to talk about this, first and last mile. We need to talk about revitalizing the study, which you kind of mentioned in 2014. We probably need to fund that and vitalize that study of first and last mile. I think we need to assume that RTD is not here anymore, other than the goal line. That's all they have. We've done everything we can to help RTD become successful and maintain their revenues. As far as even putting up affordable housing by the Walmart on 50, on Ralston Road, and now they're going to cut that whole route. So not only do we have shopping, affordable housing, government services, everything going on this road, widened roads, gone. And you know why? They never took in the consideration of the tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure we put in to help support RTD and their bus ride, and they, they just, they're just not here to hear us. If I would bring back some of those maps, look hard at those maps. We are the big void, the white spot between Boulder and Lakewood. We have nothing. And so now, you know where this leads me? Why am I paying taxes? Castle Rock, why, they, you know, they don't get bus service. You know, what, should we even be part of this RTD program? If I can't, why not, why not take the tax and let me do my own first and last mile? I'll get you to the goal line, but there's no reason to continue to pay RTD out of my taxes if they're not going to provide any service except two or three lines in my community, which services maybe what, 30%, maybe 20% of my community? I, I, we as council need to have a serious conversation around our relationship here and what we're going to do about this, because we can't keep investing if RTD can invest back in our community. Let's solve our own problems, cut them out of the picture, and let's just do our own thing. Again, Director Cook, it's not about you or anything. You're great. But the rest of your board is, there's other people that vote, and we need to get them to, to listen to us. So I think the conversation needs to be way elevated, and I think it's time. I, I will tell you, I've talked to, when I was in the advisory meetings, my, my comments are probably the norm out of everyone in that, that advisory. Everyone's frustrated in their own way, but we all have the same theme. If you go back and look at those pictures, they're, they're, they're very focused on very specific areas. Go look back at those pictures, those routes. They are, they are neglecting low-income areas, affordable housing, density in some aspects, job creation areas or job enterprise areas. They're, I don't know what they're chasing. And, and think about this on top of it. The governor has put an accountability group over this group. Shouldn't we be a little worried? How do we know that RTD is doing the best thing that they can do when the governor has to appoint an accountability committee over RTD? So at this point, I don't know what else we can do except control our own destiny and make our own decisions and not rely on RTD to, to solve our transit issues in our city other than the goal line. And maybe, maybe RTD, what I always preached to RTD in those meetings was maybe you should look at your core business and try to figure out maybe just regional lines and, and just tell the locals, you're going to have last, first and last mile, and just go from there. You know, now, I don't want to pick up the taxes around it, but maybe I should pick the taxes that they collect and subsidize us to do those first and last miles. So it's, it's a conversation I look forward to having at our strategic meeting.
Mr. Frozy, do you want to send Mr. Pfeiffer's comments to?
Can I look at your comments before you send them so I can add to them?
We, we've sent the comments to.
This, hopefully they're in depth, more than the PowerPoint, right?
Yes, we, we did have more specific and actually met the service planner from RTD to kind of discuss the comments on that technical level about what we expect from the system and how it's not being served. I think part of our effort here, both providing you with the updated information as well as the Transportation Committee providing their feedback, is to make sure the very same sentiments are received by RTD, that there's a full concern all around that.
John, did you get patted on the head and say, okay? Or did, or did they take us seriously? I mean, seriously, I don't think they take me seriously at all, and I'm elected. So I can't even imagine them taking you serious.
You know, as a.
I hate to say it, but.
As an organization, I, I think they are a little bit, they have tunnel vision around certain issues that they're dealing with. So let's say, for example, rider-operator shortages or resource type of issues. I, I think the challenge here is that if we don't, as you pointed out, talk about this and come to a table from an Arvada perspective about what we expect and what we can contribute along the way, how we can help. And the investments along Ralston Road or West 72nd Avenue is part of that process, which is what we're also expressing, that then if, if we don't bring those forward, that we're not going to really see any changes along the way. Having, you know, a district representative for this area at our meeting also shows that there's interest, you know, from, from Director Cook and certain members of the RTD board. So it really comes down to, I think, galvanizing that voice into really what we expect at the end of the day from RTD.
And, and I get, sorry, I want to finish some comments. I get the revenue. It's like kind of the chicken and the egg, right? You got to spend money to make money a little bit. But, but let's, let's think about, what I would say to RTD is, they never took the time to really understand their customer base and who they're targeting. Because like the survey question's a great one that Lisa asked. I would have stood at the bus stop and interviewed people there with my own pen and paper and talked to them. They would have never have done that, you know, and, and asked what works, what doesn't work. You know, you know, there's some people that are intimidated. Even my family's intimidated to get on the bus. You know why? It's confusing. It, it's not clear on how it is. It just assumes that you know what you're doing. I will tell you, the best marketing person that teaches people how to do and how to enjoy and the ridership and how it works is Shelley Cook. Her, her newsletters and everything she sends out, why isn't RTD doing that? RTD doesn't do that at all. Thank God that we have somebody like Shelley trying to teach some people and trying to encourage people to ride and, and showing them how to get a ticket, what you can do, what's the adventures along the line, the goal line. There's so many things, and yet RTD can't see past their nose on, on how to, to grab that base to, to grow it so they're not in a financial situation. So I, I, you know, I don't know if that ever came up in there about their growth, but it should have been in there, that the growth is thoughtful and, and thorough and, you know, equitable. You know, it's funny they use that word equitable, but yet we have the biggest black hole in the metro district, in the whole metro. So I just, I just don't get how they, I even asked them, how do you consider our being, with Arvada being equitable? What's your definition of equitable? We can never get past that. It was always like, well, that's low income. Well, no, that's not. Equitable means I should have accessibility to, to mass transit, period, and it's affordable. So I'll get off my horse, hopefully through some of that, and I can't, I'm looking forward to Wednesday night. And you know what? My, my peers are more than welcome to join us on Wednesday night at 5:30 in the Ann Campbell Room.
The, I think that Mr. Pfeiffer has made a point very well. And frankly, Mr. Pfeiffer, I'm sure you've heard this from your fellow folks down at Dr. Cog, and I've certainly heard it from the metro mayors, my fellow mayors as well. So, you know, it's not just Arvada beating the drum on this. It's a pretty universal feeling. Ms. Cook, do you want to add anything, or do you just want to? And, and I totally agree with Mr. Pfeiffer. You've been such an advocate for, for Arvada, first as a city council member, you operating the original A-line, which was, you know, frankly, far better than anything that RTD offered through that timeframe. And, you know, you represent us well down at, at RTD, but you're just one of, what, 18 of you down there?
There are 15 of us on the board, yeah. And actually, good people. But I would just note the place we're at. You know, I, I don't disagree with about the process. I think we can improve that. And I think there's probably still time. You all have made some really concrete and good suggestions that need to be carried forward. And I'll take, I'll take those, and as, as noted, we'll be at Wednesday's meeting as well. I, I do want to stress that there, you know, there, there's this diminished pie in part because of the, the great effort made to finish out FastTrax or to get it to the extent it can. And so that reflects the priority of past years and, and frankly, myself. I thought that was the most important piece. So you, you've got to take into account the pretty sizable commitment for the next 20, 30 years to sustain that system. And that's not allowing the other parts of FastTrax to go forward. And I think right now what it means is we need to do better, to be more creative, to stretch our money, to leverage other money. But beyond that, it's also going to take the efforts of stakeholders and TNA, TMAs and nonprofits like we operated and the limes and birds of the, of the world to bring transit to the next step. So I think it needs to be a collaborative effort, working with you. And I'm glad to hear you, Councilwoman Pfeiffer, talk about sort of grabbing hold of that. I really appreciate that and look forward to working with you on those kinds of, you know, proactive collaborative partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing while she's up there? Sorry, Ms. Cook. You, you really need to find a consultant that, that embraces the community engagement, no matter, not just me, but everyone. And I don't think that ever was captured through the two years of that adventure. It was a waste of your time because you missed the essence of that feedback. And, and I think that board needs to be very, very aware that the, the tail wag the dog. And, and that consultant needs to be held accountable for, you know, they just fed you with what they believed was the answer, not necessarily what the community told them. I mean, I was in the room all the time and on calls, and I can tell you the chat that was happening outside is that we're just, we're wasting our time. So I would, I would strongly encourage that you, as a board member, talk to your other board members to say, maybe we should reset this conversation and give some more time for community feedback before just shutting it down by February 9th or the March 22nd, all these other deadlines. And hopefully, that's not contractually driven by your consultant because they want to get paid before their contract ends. But hopefully, we, we look at the fact that if it takes six months to engage the community constituency, we should take the six months or the 12 months and not try to rush it unless in 30 days or 60 days.
I hear you. And that was a message to you that came through. Slow it down. I agree, and I'll work on that. There is, this, this is kind of an opportunity. The GM outside of this effort, as part of her own performance management system, is, is putting into place a way to assess rider opinions and pain points, she calls them. So they are going to like stop every fourth rider on routes that go throughout the system, that sample based upon ridership. And so maybe they can incorporate some of this into that work, which I think is just now getting underway. So that's a great thought.
And, and try to also hit the non-ridership, like the Western Arvada folks.
Clearly.
Yeah, just see, would you be interested, if we had a bus here, would this be something that you would ride and actually get a pulse? Some of our data might be anecdotal or, you know, just people complain to us. But it would be very nice to do a survey of areas that are, let's just say, not served or underserved, regardless of their social or economic status.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. And thank you to our committee. We appreciate your hard work on all this and being engaged in this. So you're, you're certainly helping us through this process. Thank you to our team. I'm glad you're taking a, what I see a pretty aggressive, you know, we're not just going along to get along. We are giving constructive criticism as, as appropriate here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to public comment. I've got some people signed up. We, you know, we've got a couple of workshops tonight, and some of the individuals who are signed up are wanting to speak with regard to those workshop items. We don't take public input during the workshop itself, so it's appropriate for you to make your comments now during the public comment portion. First, I'll call on Keith Emery.
He's, he's been up, Keith is part of representation.
Oh, okay, so you've got several of you?
Yeah, so Tara, Keith, and Laura.
Okay, yeah, I've got Tara, Keith, and I've got Danielle as well. So however you want, however you all want to go, it's three minutes a person, so we'll go from there. Very good.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Wasnewski. I emailed several of you about composting earlier this month, and I got wonderful feedback, so I'm here in person. I recently caught wind via the Sustainable Committee that our city is considering citywide composting. I am in favor of citywide composting. I am told a compost transfer station within city limits would be needed to be able to implement a citywide composting service. I am in favor of a composting transfer station being within city limits. I am a homeowner, and I currently compost as much food and yard waste as I can in three large bins in our. in three large bins in our backyard. I can only compost fruit, vegetable trimmings, grass, and leaves, but summer grass clippings and other yard waste gets thrown in the trash weekly during the spring and summer months. It's more than my compost system can handle. If I could include these items in my composting efforts, they wouldn't end up in the landfill. According to the EPA, almost 8% of garbage in the dump is lawn trimmings, and 21.6% is food waste. We could keep this 30% out of our dump by offering compost to the citizens of our Vada. I believe my fellow citizens of our Vada would be in support of a citywide composting service and having a transfer station within city limits. It makes sense having a transfer station within city limits to lessen emissions and keep the service convenient. I will happily pay to have my food scraps and yard waste picked up by the city's composting service or dropping it off on my own. I would also want to purchase the final compost product from the city for my garden and yard plantings. Almost everyone on my block uses the city's new trash service, and I believe they would be willing to use the city's composting service as well. Talking with my friends, they say they will use a composting service if the city provides it. This service would help create more jobs in our beautiful city. Let's make our Vada the example to other cities. If the council wants to know what citizens think about this idea, we should include it and speak up our Vada. Thank you.
Thank you. And then whoever else wants to come up next.
We're in a workshop? We're part of a presentation?
Oh, you're part of the presentation tonight. Got it, okay, fair enough. Anybody else here to address City Council on public comment at this time? And we've got somebody in the back. Yes, ma'am. Well, you'll need to come down to the podium if you would, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Wilma, and I've been in our Vada since, in early 90s. But my family homesteaded Colorado, so I've been in Colorado, my family, since 18-something. Anyway, we've been having problems with the red alerts. How does that work for our Vada people? We used to get it, then we didn't get it, and then we used to get it, and then we had one in our neighborhood three or four nights ago. We didn't know anything about it. So I was just wondering, those red alerts that go out, you know?
Ma'am, what I'll have you do, if you'll get with the city clerk, give her your contact information. We'll have somebody get in contact with you
Okay.
so that we can provide you that information.
Okay. And on those K-95 masks?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you get them at?
We'll do the same thing, get you that information through the, through the city clerk.
Okay. And on the building that's going across from my house on 53rd? When is that going to start? I mean, you know, that's going to cause a lot of problems on our street, I feel.
Okay, very good. If you'll give city clerk your information, we'll get you some answers to this.
Is that the housing development that you were talking about at the first part? I don't know what it's called there on 53rd and...
And what? What's the cross?
Garrison? 53rd and Flower?
We know which-
Yeah, not off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor, but if we can get the contact information, we'll have people from the appropriate city units reach out.
I think it's Sheffield's out of Superior that are doing the building of it. I went to the meeting that they had here.
So they had a community meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that it might be part of this meeting.
No, it's not, not tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
And how does the other people in our Vada know about meetings that you're putting on, like tonight?
Well, these are regularly scheduled meetings. There's both a public notice provision, and then obviously, people can follow on Channel 8 or on the website on ourvada.org.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, if you'll get with the city clerk here, right here, lady in red. Right there. If you'll get to her with your address and phone number or email address, we'll get the right people to get back to you on each of those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have some people.
Shannon Snyder's on Zoom.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Snyder, and I'm a resident of Kandales. Typically, I do not feel comfortable... Ah, hold on, you messed up my plan here. Thank you. Typically, I do not feel comfortable making public comments or statements. But in light of the Marshall Fire, I realized I can no longer remain silent. The pandemic has been hard on everyone, and personally, I experienced the unexpected death of my mother in 2021. Then on December 30th, I had to watch the flames march closer and closer to our home, and it was terrifying. We have now seen firsthand how the impacts of climate change and ignition source could devastate our front-range communities. The Marshall Fire should be a wake-up call, and we in our Vada, we're lucky we were spared this time. As an environmental scientist, I know there is a risk living in the wildland-urban interface. However, now I realize it is not a remote risk and that our state and local governments are wellfully underprepared for wildfire occurrences in the Wui that will become more frequent in the future due to climate change. Prior to the Marshall Fire, a trend toward more winter grass fires inside cities had never been more evident than during the seven weeks before this disaster. There were eight wildfires from Colorado Springs to Boulder between November 14th and December 27th, a few causing evacuations. And then there was December 30th. It'll be easy for some to dismiss this disaster because of the hurricane-force winds that accompanied it. But as a resident of Kandales, I can assure you the hurricane-force winds are a common occurrence in the area where the fire began. And I can assure you that this will not be the last time a fire like this will happen. Having just an evacuation plan is inadequate, short-sighted, and dangerous. Climate change requires us to be proactive to prevent catastrophic loss. As an employee of the federal government, I have seen firsthand how governments are getting stuck in a never-ending dual loop of disaster response and recovery, which drains the necessary money and resources to undertake prevention. Given the limited amount of time I have tonight, I have submitted a written comment outlining actions the city can take in the short term to mitigate the impacts of wildfire. I suspect that you will say you do not have the money nor the political will to undertake these measures. But based upon available information, poor planning and lack of economic investment and climate resiliency cost more lives, property damage, and money in the long run. Many Colorado communities have climate action plans. It's the city's duty to give its residents a fighting chance and lower their vulnerability. Further inaction and lack of investment on the city's part will lead to unnecessary cost and tragedy in the future. It's the cost of inaction that will be your liability and legacy, pain, suffering, and tragedy that could have been avoided on your watch. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I assume we've received that, her action plan comments, and we'll be getting that distributed. Very good. We have those, and we'll be reviewing those as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other individuals signed up?
Yes, I'm signed up, and I was just prompted to-
Very good. Go ahead.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. I'll be speaking briefly tonight on the forthcoming presentation by the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee. My name is Kristi Turner. I'm a resident of our Vada and founder and CEO of Scraps. As a local compost hauling company based in the our Vada area and servicing residents and businesses throughout Jefferson County, indeed throughout the Denver metro, I'd like to quickly share a perspective on one particular aspect of tonight's ASAC presentation, a potential compost transfer station here in our Vada. For those in attendance who may not know, a brief primer on transfer stations, they play a critical role in a community's waste management endeavors, whether that's for trash recyclables or, in this case, compostable materials. And they all serve the same basic function, consolidating waste from multiple collection vehicles into larger, higher-volume transfer vehicles for more economical transport to distant disposal sites. No long-term storage of material occurs at a transfer station. It's simply consolidated, loaded, and moved off-site. In this case, trailers would haul the material to regional commercial compost processing facilities, such as A1 Organics, who some of you may know is the largest facility in our state, about 60 miles northeast of our Vada, where millions of tons of material is processed into finished compost each year. As a small business, we service more than 2,000 customers, collect more than 30,000 pounds of material each week, and we've diverted just short of 1.5 million pounds of compostable material, helping keep just a small portion of the nearly 50% of our region's waste that is compostable out of the landfill. And as we grow, one thing is clear. Trucking our material out to these processing facilities, a 100-plus-mile round-trip journey that we make up to three times per week, even at our current size, is one of the most expensive and least efficient components of our business, not to mention the impacts on roads, air quality, and the lifespan of our fleet. By addressing this major roadblock, a transfer station here in our Vada could dramatically improve the efficiency of our own operations, enhance our ability to service more customers in the region as well. It would open up the field for scraps and other companies like ours to reach more of the 120,000-plus residents here in our Vada, as well as the more than 400,000 residents across neighboring Jeffco cities who currently lack options. A facility could provide direct income in the form of rent, tipping fees, and otherwise for the city of our Vada. It could help more companies enter this important economic sector, and it could even help create pathways to municipal compost collection in the Jefferson County area for cities inclined to explore this avenue to reducing waste. On top of these benefits, recent studies made clear the value of investing in composting here in our region. Notably, composting creates up to five times as many jobs as trash here in our region. I'll save all the other numerous benefits to the environment, to agriculture, to stormwater management, et cetera, for another forum. For now, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public comment. Now I'll move on to new business. We have four items on our consent agenda. The first is a resolution approving an agreement by and between the city of our Vada and our Vada German Garage for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to accommodate parking encroachments within the public right-of-way. Second is a resolution authorizing a change order, number two, and to the second renewed and amended agreement between the city of our Vada and Triple M Construction for the 2019, 2020, and 2021 concrete replacement projects in an amount not to exceed approximately $887,000. Next is a resolution adopting the amended fee schedule for land use pursuant to Chapter 74 of the Planning and Development Code of the city of our Vada. And the last one is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a blanket purchase order in the amount of $700,000 to Hill Petroleum Company for the purchase of fuel used in city vehicles and equipment. Before we have a motion on this and vote, I'll disclose that I am a customer of our Vada German Garage, but have no financial interest in them or would gain anything by approval or denial of this resolution, and therefore feel qualified to be able to participate in the vote. Do I have a motion to approve this consent agenda? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Can I say so moved?
Move adoption of the consent agenda.
Yeah, I moved adoption of the consent items. Resolution 22-006 through 009.
Motion for approval. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And the remaining council votes yes as well. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. We have no resolutions, we have no ordinances, and we have no public hearings, but we do have two workshops. Mr. Devon, do you want to introduce the our Vada Sustainability Advisory Committee presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're in the council. We have Laurel Matry, Keith Emery, and Tara Ray, who are going to, looks like they're going to collaborate for the presentation of the Sustainability Advisory Committee tonight.
Very good. I apologize for my confusion. I had understood we were going to have some people speaking during public comment, and that's what my ineptitude once again showed forward. Go ahead.
Thanks. So my name's Laurel Matry. This is Tara Kent, and this is Keith Emery, and we're members of the our Vada Sustainability Advisory Committee. Good evening, council members, city staff, any our Vada residents that are still here. Thanks for having us. So first off, next slide, please. Thank you. First of all, we want to thank the city council and the city team that worked on passing the Organized Waste Hauling and Recycling Program and helping us to make it a success. We're thrilled to see how many households are participating in recycling. We appreciate all your hard work in both making it a reality and being there for the community as it adjusts the new system. So thank you very much. So the our Vada Sustainability Advisory Committee provides strategic guidance for the implementation of Sustain Our Vada. Sustain Our Vada, next slide, please. Sustain Our Vada is a way of honoring our Vada's rich heritage and preserving our resources to foster economic prosperity, environmental stewardship, and community vitality today and into the future. Also, we are advising city council and staff to address an institutionalized equity work related to sustainability on behalf of all residents. So we're eager to keep the momentum going for a more sustainable our Vada. We've been thinking hard on what sustainability actions the city should take on next. After forming subcommittees and workshopping ideas, we wanted to share the list of initiatives and focus areas we believe would both have a high impact on the community and are issues the community needs most and would embrace. Next slide. So this is our summary of proposed actions. There's three main actions. First would be, we encourage you to hire a sustainability coordinator. And we're going to talk about some of the initiatives that we would recommend that coordinator work on. The second action is we would encourage you to support the compost transfer station. Third action is we have some items around having a more effective waste diversion for our Vada. So Keith Emery is going to speak to you about our first action.
So Action One, we need, a staff support is needed for the diversity of sustainability initiatives and climate action needs. Bringing on board a sustainability coordinator would help all city departments incorporate sustainability into their actions, liaison with other Colorado cities who have this position, as well as be the primary liaison for ASAC. Several surrounding municipalities with smaller populations have paid sustainability staff, including Boulder, Golden, Lafayette, Lakewood, and Westminster. The city is missing out on support from and participation in existing sustainability organizations, collaboratives, and grant programs that a coordinator would have time for. This goal aligns with our Vada strategic plan priorities within the work systems of organizational and service effectiveness, vibrant community and neighborhoods, and community and economic development. Also, given our advice to address an institutionalized equity work, we would highly encourage the city to hire a full-time staff position who has an equity background. Next slide. So what is the need for a climate action plan? The time to act around climate issues is now. With the recent Marshall Fire, yearly wildfire season with its impact on air quality and public health, ongoing drought concerns, the recent 500-year flood, and our increasing population in our Vada. Surrounding communities like Denver, Boulder, and Lakewood, climate action plans address the urgent need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and be prepared as a community for the inevitable future climate disasters. Resiliency, the disaster preparedness, and mitigation should all be addressed and planned for, and not waiting until after a disaster happens. In order to address these pressing challenges, we need a dedicated sustainability staff person to work in collaboration with the resiliency coordinator, other relevant departments, and develop and implement and maintain a climate action plan. This goal addresses the strategic plan priorities of organizational and service effectiveness, and vibrant community and neighborhoods, and safe communities. Next slide. So what are the benefits of a climate action plan? Planning upfront versus mitigating disaster is way more cost-effective. Preventing and planning for health impacts from climate disasters, extreme heat impacts, exposure to pollutants has economic benefits. Creating more resilient communities that directly address equity impacts has social benefits. Planning for impacts of water, vegetation, wildlife, air quality will positively impact the environment. Advanced preparation with an eye on infrastructure to mitigate impact reduces recovery time, saves money- saves money in the long term, and will improve our resiliency. Decreasing impacts on housing, environmental health, community economy from climate events occurs through disaster mitigation and risk management. Next slide. So, the last year, XL had a Partners in Energy program that worked with the city of Arvada, and ASAC was one of the stakeholders on that committee. And we were excited to participate in that and are pleased with the goals and would encourage the city to adopt the recommendations. The community, and some of the goals that the, from that include community engagement and outreach to include, that includes equities concerns, green, affordable energy, focus on renewables, focus on the electrification of Arvada's fleet and buildings, and it also aligns with the state goals, including HB 260 transportation electric feed and HB 1266, which redresses effects of environmental injustice. Next slide, and Laurel will take over.
So, again, we are talking about a climate action plan and about the Partners in Energy Program to stress that there's really a lot of work that can be done, that should be done by a hired sustainability professional that works for the city. So, another thing that we, that this sustainability person would do would be to work on ongoing community outreach around sustainability issues. As the Partners in Energy Program has reinforced, community involvement and outreach for sustainability issues is a must for making programs successful. So, we've brainstormed some ideas on how a dedicated staff members could create sustainability outreach channels from the city that would help educate and inform residents on a large scale and through multiple formats. A dedicated staff member could create a Sustain Arvada series in social media outlets. A dedicated staff member could create a Sustain Arvada section in every Arvada report and city e-newsletter, and create a Sustain Arvada Facebook page. They could also create a series of informational brochures and how-to guides related to sustainability at home. And then, a dedicated staff member could create alerts and highlights in already-created channels that highlight the sustainability-related work the city is doing and that people could actually participate in. Also, a dedicated staff member could further engage local businesses that have sustainability values, like Hestro, who has its North American headquarters in Arvada. Finally, the committee recognizes that all materials and programs need to be made accessible to all residents. That means they're in English, Spanish, Russian for the visually impaired, and with other translation services as needed. Next slide, please. Another area that we would encourage a paid sustainability staff person to work on is to support addressing water conservation and air quality concerns in Arvada. Water is a limited resource, we all know this. Conservation information is missing in information to water utility users. This person could promote water conservation for adults in the city by researching what works best for this area from other cities and from Arvada itself. They could integrate this education into our water bills and other strategic places. They could promote other options like rain barrel usage, gardens in a box, turf removal, and they could consult with other nonprofits that support water conservation efforts. This would greatly increase communication efforts, especially active outreach to neighborhoods. Poor air quality significantly impacts the health of Arvada residents. Increased traffic emissions, natural gas combustion, and seasonal wildfires must all be taken into account when planning for the future health and safety of Arvada. Finally, impacts to air and water quality also disproportionately impact and affect our poor or more marginalized residents who bear the brunt of resource limits and pollution with their health and finances. Next slide, please. Next up is Tara Kent.
Hi. All right. Second action, we've already heard from a couple different citizens, including Danielle, and then online was Kristi with Scraps, who runs a business based on composting. So, we, as a committee of ASAC, we understand we are only six months into the new organized hauling system that was quite an effort for all of us, and we don't, we want to make room for future composting. We're not saying that this has to be, this has to happen right now, but a composting transfer system is going to be the first step in getting curbside organic pickup for residents. And the planning of this system, we can partner with neighboring cities to reduce these costs. So, a transfer system lowers the cost of compost services, and I think we heard that from the residents, and Arvada does have that land on Highway 93. The transfer station would serve this entire region and county. We could share it with even Golden. And the ASAC committee does understand that the immediate changes are not urgent, but let's plan ahead and be proactive and have this in place so when curbside composting is a reality, it's already ready, and it's going to be economic and efficient. So, we can plan ahead, and there's also grant opportunities that a sustainability coordinator at the city would actually be a great asset to securing, including the Front Range Waste Diversion Fund. And so, we have heard from the public regarding compost. They want it. They demand leaf and yard waste recycling, and we see really successful leaf drop-off events, but that is really for people who can haul their leaves there, and not everybody has a vehicle, not everybody has a vehicle that can haul 15 bags of leaves, and the current system is not accepting organics in that matter. So, residents do see this as a barrier to the current waste hauling program. And so, a transfer system and curbside composting would help the current waste hauling program expand and get more general public support. Next slide, please. So, the third action, and final action, that we, as a committee, are proposing the city take action on is increasing the waste diversion opportunities around Arvada. So, we have heard that the city is working with the Business Improvement District and to provide recycling bins in Old Town. We support this initiative, and we want to expand this to include all of Arvada's parks. And while we're doing recycling, if we get curbside composting, we can, might as well start recycling organics as well. Old Town is busier than ever. We have residents and visitors that are constantly visiting and would benefit greatly from having recycling and composting bins there, next to all the trash bins, just like other cities and Denver Airport are doing already. So, visitors and residents expect to be able to do the right thing when they're out and about, shopping, and attracted to cities that have these types of systems in place. So, recently, when there were recycling bins at the Arvada festivals, I was a volunteer at a festival. I had great feedback from residents who wanted to see more recycling and even compost, because a lot of our waste, as Kristi mentioned, nearly 60% is compostable if you include cardboard and dog hair, but 30% solid of our waste stream is compostable. It's food scraps, and it's the weight of the trucks as well. So, we can show that both the visitors and the residents in Arvada, that our city cares about the public health and the environment in a simple, visible way. And a sustainability coordinator can secure the funding that will help this program move forward. Recycling bins are in high demand, and it's a requested item from community members. It's a low-hanging fruit. Have a coordinator secure the grants. Recycling and composting bins would be, provide consistency in public spaces, including Old Town, like the farmers' markets, near the library, at schools, and parks. We, the ASAC committee, encourages collaboration with the festivals commission on moving towards a piloted zero-waste event, which is not as hard as it seems, for all the city's numerous festivals. Next slide, please. So, just to recap what we've heard today from our committee, Laurel and Keith outlined why we really need a dedicated sustainability coordinator that is on this full-time. Every other city around here has it. We're a huge city. I think we're ready. We need a climate action plan. We know that this climate action plan, as well as XL's Energy and Partners in Energy Program, can be supported by a sustainability coordinator. That coordinator will also support water conservation and air quality issues around the city and securing grants. Supporting a compost transfer system, number two, would be the first step for future curbside organics pickup. And thirdly, our committee would really like the city to implement more effective waste diversion, so not just having trash cans, let's have recycling, let's have organics pickup, in not only in Old Town, but also at all of the parks and maybe even the festivals. So, all of these actions are in line with the city council's strategic plan. And we believe that the future of Arvada and its sustainability impacts all of us, and with that in mind, we encourage city council and staff to address equity impacts for all the residents and institutionalized policies that will reflect that commitment. Mayor Williams and the rest of the city council persons, we really thank you for your time today, and we're open to questions.
Very good. Excellent presentation, and stay tuned to watch Tara in a great video. I haven't seen it yet.
I haven't either.
Okay.
I've been waiting.
Where we, we got to talk about the app for your phones that will hook into our smart water meters for water conservation. So, she did a great job on that, and I was.
That was fun.
I was just the bump on the log with that one. But Lisa Smith, you're first.
Yes, thank you for that presentation, and I think I saw that video this morning for some reason.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I don't know. I think I saw it, because you look familiar.
Okay.
But I do appreciate the talk about how you found grants and you identified grants already that's available, so it kind of helps. My question is, has there been any research that you found in funding a position with those grants, like, for example, funding a coordinator with grant money? Do you?
Sure. So, I can speak to that. You know, I can speak to the Front Range Waste Diversion Fund. Certainly, if we come to the grant with, you know, certain goals and objectives that we set forth around how we're going to increase diversion by, you know, things like creating some sort of a diversion plan, you know, purchasing recycling bins for Old Town and parks, you know, that's something that I think that would be understandable to the fund to hire, or at least partially fund a staff person to do that work. And then, there's also other state and there's foundation grants, you know, if you actually have, if you have a plan or you have objectives in terms of what your climate actions are, I mean, there's plenty of resources available, and that's something that we can work with our colleagues in Denver and, you know, other surrounding communities around where they're getting some of their funding for staff positions.
Thank you. And I noticed in the, in the first action, you had listed a lot of things that we need to do or that you want to explore. Has your committee looked at prioritizing which you think is most important to prioritize within those kind of sub-goals?
Oh, in terms of the actions that a staff person, I would say, really, we need to update the Sustain Arvada Plan and have it be a climate action plan. I mean, I think, you know, with the climate emergencies and events that are happening more regularly now, we really need to be proactive as a city to look at, you know, not only how are we contributing to these sort of things with our emissions, with how we use water, what we do with our waste, but then also what we would do to mitigate those things and plan for those extreme events. So, I'd say, really, a climate action plan would be, you know, would really like set the stage for all the other things that we're recommending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones or Mr. Marriott, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of questions for the committee. Thank you guys for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the work it takes to do these. I have a couple of questions. So, you mentioned grant opportunities available. Have you not gone and applied for a grant for a staff position for your committee?
Thank you. That's actually, we've been in conversation with Matt about that and how that might look, and, you know, we like to respect the staff members with the city to say, okay, how can we collaborate with the current grant writers and with the resiliency coordinator? So, that is something that we are researching and hope to support. You know, and we need support from the city. If we're going to look at hiring a staff person, we'd need to know that you all would be on board with having this person. You know, I think that's something we'd gladly be a part of in terms of looking for grant funding.
So, do you think you could get grant funding to pay for a position, or you're thinking you'd get grant funding to partially pay and the city be on the hook for the rest?
I think, I think initially, we could find grant funding to fund the position, but most funders are really looking for that longer-term commitment from cities that they'll support this position ongoing, so it's not just, they'll fund us for a year and then we have to go looking for another source. So, it'd have to be kind of a partnership, I think, between the city of Arvada and the funders.
Okay. So, currently, the city, you know, we spend all the money every year, you know, that's the way city budgets are. If you're going to divert spending from one thing to another, generally, there's something you have to stop doing. Have you looked at our budget and decided or made any thoughts about what should we do, stop doing, or do less of, or something so that, so that we can do this instead?
No, we haven't, but that's something that we'd be willing to work with Matt to look at, to see, you know, and then also, I will say that if you hire a sustainability person who knows water conservation, energy efficiency, typically, that person pays for their position in the efficiency savings and water conservation savings. I mean, that's kind of like part and parcel for a sustainability coordinator to expect that they would be actively engaged in efficiency measures that would save the city money over the long term.
Okay. How do you guys get your committee staffed now?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
Yeah. How does the city staff your sustainability committee now?
Oh, Matt, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I can answer that one. Oh, thank you. Yes, so currently, I'm serving as the committee liaison, and so pretty much, it's a role that helps with a lot of the administrative and logistical support, answering their questions, helping set up this meeting, as an example. So, that's kind of the relationship. They'll ask me questions about what we're doing and to provide that feedback. So, since they are an advisory committee, this is really, you know, their role is asking the city what they think we can do, and it's kind of then for us, if we were to pursue any of these options, to take it from there.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, let me switch topics here. I want to talk about the compost transfer station. It's an interesting idea. So, you guys in your committee have obviously talked about it. So, are you proposing that the city build and own a compost transfer station, or are you proposing the city allow one? Or what exactly are you proposing here?
Yeah, I think, I think we're looking at a combination of both of those. So, the city has land, right? And land is expensive. I think that's the first step, is city has land. As far as building a compost transfer system, we also identified that there are waste diversion grants that can be used to fund some of this, but yes, it would be something that would be built by the city on city land, and we could partner with other cities like Golden if it's adjacent, because all these western areas of the metro need a place to drop a million tons of waste before it gets efficiently transferred, what, 60 miles northeast of the metro area?
Right. And then, and then are you proposing that private companies then are the ones who use it? Would they operate it as well?
Yes, yes. And so, any, any of these, like Kristi, I think, was even saying she would benefit as a small organics waste hauler, because she could actually drop off her stuff there instead of having a smaller.
But would they then be able to pay to use it, or would they get to use it for free?
They would probably pay a tipping fee. I don't know the nuances of all of this, but they would probably pay a tipping fee.
Okay. Have you looked in, does the city have any land use regulations that would prevent a, just prevent a company from purchasing land and developing their own compost transfer facility?
Not aware. I mean, a transfer system is very different than a composting system, right? A lot of people are against the full-on composting system, because you're keeping all your grant, you know, your organics in one place that could cause pest issues like rats, and it smells potentially, but this would be a transfer system, a transfer facility. So, all of that would just be transferred into a larger truck and would be moved off-site very quickly, so it wouldn't be causing any of these other issues that actual transfers or composting facilities cause.
Right, but you haven't looked into whether a private company could just do that right now if they so chose?
I don't, yeah, I have, we don't know. Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Is it, is it, do you guys think is the barrier the reason it doesn't exist because it's not economically viable, or is it just not allowed?
You mean, having a transfer station?
Well, why has the, so it sounds like from hearing you guys, there's demand for something like that. There's a need, there's demand, and so markets usually solve those demand things unless there's an obstacle. And so, I guess I'm wondering if you guys have looked into what the obstacle to the market satisfying this demand is. Is it a regulatory hurdle, or is it an economic hurdle?
I don't know. I would think that one of the obstacles is it's easy to throw our stuff in the trash. It's just easier to throw it in the trash than to divert it into these other things. It's just easier to throw it in the trash than to divert it into these other things. And if people don't have a space to throw it into an organics, then there just isn't the need for it. And so there isn't demand for that. But if we create that, and we create a new paradigm for waste diversion, I think that demand will come.
Okay. All right. So let me just change the subject. One last, one last couple of questions here. So I was under the impression, over the last couple of years, when the city implemented its single hauler trash program, that one of the features of that program was yard waste drop-off events?
True.
Has that not happened, or what's the status with those?
I do believe that we had two waste leaf drop-off events in November, and they're huge successes. People line up, people drop off their leaves, it gets, you know, all put together and composted and shredded. But I think there's barriers to that, because some people, we heard RTD, there's a lot of residents in Arvada that, I'm thinking southeast Arvada, which is an underserved area, which has huge old trees that throw off a lot of branches and a lot of leaves. And these people necessarily, don't necessarily have vehicles to transfer organics.
So my understanding, though, those things we had this fall were for tree leaves only?
It is.
What are Arvada residents to do with branches and, oh, garden, you know, stuff that's no good in your garden anymore and those types of things? Was that not part of the original intent of the single hauler trash program?
Ms. Simpson would like to interject at this point.
Okay, sure.
Hi, Councilmember Marriott. I believe we discussed some of this during our workshops a couple of years ago. So branches can be cut up and bundled in place next to the trash, and they will be hauled away for a nominal fee. Unfortunately, I don't believe Jason is with us tonight to answer that one. And then in addition, the spring event is going to be the slash event for yard slash and whatnot. The fall is leaves, not slash, so it's not branches and things. However, just to interject, and I apologize, I'll return the time. I would like to say that you're absolutely correct. Grass trimmings and branches throughout the season remain a significant problem, particularly in District Two. You're mentioning the east side, and I fully agree with that. So I do believe and strongly advocate for additional solutions for the green waste that occurs throughout the summer. Apologies for interrupting Mr. Marriott, but I knew the answer to that one.
Yeah, no problem. I'm just happy to hear answers to it. So that finishes my questions. Thank you for, thank you guys for your time. Thank you for your efforts, too. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for your presentation and your work this evening. I had a couple of comments and maybe some questions in there with it, too. For the climate action plan, I think, you know, the, we've talked, and tonight you shared, and others have shared about, you know, our concern for these disasters that we're seeing coming closer and closer. And certainly, we all felt that with the recent Marshall fire. And I'm learning about something that I think is very intriguing that I want us to explore more is this, you know, regenerative agriculture and how that can be applied in urban areas. And so I think that really kind of encompasses how both mitigation and resiliency can really come together, and we're trying to find these solutions. Because, you know, you take what happened with that fire, you talked about the winds, but also the fact that we had just gone through, I think, one of the longest droughts of no snow in our region. And that combination really was one of the main causes for what happened. So extremely dry conditions. And what we're finding with regenerative agriculture is that when you put back the soil microbes that need to be to keep our soil healthy, and I heard in a presentation that was given by our forestry department, was we have one of the poorest soils in the area in Arvada. So looking at how do we rejuvenate that soil, and what happens is it pulls carbon out of the atmosphere. So there's the mitigation piece, but also it stores more moisture when you do that. And so you're seeing more moisture in the soil. That means you have more moisture in your plants. So your grasses that caught on fire are going to be more fire-resistant with that moisture. And so I think it's that combination of both the mitigation and resiliency. And I think that's a great example of that, that we're talking about and thinking about a climate action plan, just one example of many. But also, I heard, talking to some friends who were in a neighborhood that was lost, part was lost, and the homes that were saved in that neighborhood was because they had evergreen trees as a fire break. And so even planting more trees is something that's going to help with that resiliency for the fire, but also, again, with the mitigation on climate change, because it's going to pull more of that carbon out of the atmosphere. And really, this concept of what we call a cool city concept that I'm hearing about is along those lines of planting more trees to really lower our temperature at the local microclimate level. And also, you know, it creates more humidity in that microclimate to have more of those trees. And so that, again, is another great resiliency piece to think about in fighting these fire conditions. I want to, while we're kind of on that topic, talk about the compost transfer station a little bit, too. So to help get back to Councilmember Marriott's question, I think one of the biggest barriers is land, because you do need a certain type of property of land to have this transfer station. And so as I have been trying to explore this issue with our partners like the county and other communities like Golden, like you mentioned, that is the challenge. They don't have the land for it. And so I'm excited, the opportunity that we might, as a city, have that land to help provide that service. And kind of getting back to what Councilmember Simpson was talking about, I have heard so much from constituents about not being able to do anything with leaves or branches and yard waste, because they don't have the ability to truck it somewhere. And so this is going to be a huge benefit service for our community to be able to have that curbside service that they're asking for. And so that transfer station, having that land, and it certainly can be a public-private partnership, and we've seen that happen elsewhere. So I don't think it has to solely be public, you know, owned, but we can certainly look at a public-private partnership there. But I think there, you know, these are very important issues for us to be addressing, and thank you again for bringing them forward tonight.
Very good. Mr. Devin, I guess my thought on this issue is that we're going to need direction or some input from the city team in terms of, you know, what would be involved in terms of the requests that are being made by the Sustainability Committee. Frankly, I totally agree with the low-hanging fruit, you know, let's look for, you know, pick our successes early and take advantage of them. In terms of a sustainability coordinator, things of that nature, you know, we're going to be looking to you and your team to give us input as to, you know, what's that going to cost? What, as Mr. Marriott appropriately points out, what, you know, where do you get the money? And are we going to have to make sacrifices elsewhere to be able to do this? Or is Mr. Archer going to be able to pull another rabbit out of a hat?
Well, I'm always counting on Mr. Archer to pull another rabbit out of the hat. But what I would suggest to the city council, based on this presentation from our representatives of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, is that we can prepare some information for you to consider during the city council retreat.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you all for your presentation. Great job, and appreciate your ongoing work. Okay. Next, we have the City of Arvada 2020 Legislative Agenda. Does anybody need a break? Are we good to keep moving? Keep moving? Okay, we'll keep moving.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe we can make this a pretty efficient presentation.
I'm glad that you're learning to do that, Mr. Devin.
Yeah. It's only taken 10 years, sir. The legislative agenda, I think the council is well aware of what it's for. By the way, I know you've all looked at the legislative agenda. We provided a couple of opportunities for you to review it in a draft form, both in December and earlier this month. So I'm sure you're very well aware of it. It is our message to the state legislature, particularly to those legislators that represent Arvada. There are common themes that we illustrate in the legislative agenda. Maintain local control, no mandates, preservation of traditional authority, and emphasizing that local problems need local solutions. Why don't we go ahead, I think we're about three slides, four slides into it, so if we could speed up the slides? Keep going? Okay, go ahead, the next one? Yeah. The anticipated legislation that will affect municipalities this year. Focus on police reform. It's expected that there will be some additional wave of police reform. And also, the $14 million cost of the unfunded mandate for body worn cameras suggests that we really need to continue to watch police reform very closely. So we're dedicated to doing that. The federal infrastructure bill funding, the city's in support of those federal dollars, and has listed several projects where this can help. Unfortunately, I think we probably have more projects listed than there will be funding that will be available, but we'll certainly be looking at those projects. Next slide. Collective bargaining. One thing that is concerning to us is that there is anticipation that there will be collective bargaining that will force all municipalities to participate and also override any of those local governments that have chosen to implement their own collective bargaining agreement. This is something that concerns CML very greatly. I know Councilmember Marriott on the CML Policy Committee is concerned with this as well. We're concerned about the fact that this might be something that would be imposed on us this year. Affordable housing. CML chooses a central topic every year, and this is, affordable housing is that this year. And then on paid family leave, we expect there will be some legislation that will clarify the passing of the Paid Family Leave Act, and we will continue to work with current FMLA laws. Next slide. So when we provided the draft legislative agenda, we received some comments and recommendations from various council members who reviewed the document. And we felt like we wanted to bring this back in a workshop and make sure that there was some discussion amongst the entire council in order to provide the final copy of this document, and which we would then present on February the 7th for your adoption. There were some suggestions about how we describe the council's strategic priorities in our work systems. These are actually worded in our strategic plan. So I think it would be more comfortable for the city team to see if we could take this up during the actual strategic planning retreat. However, if the council feels strongly that you would like to see these edits as part of this legislative document, then we'll certainly accept the council's direction. One of the descriptions is including the term innovation in the description to tie into the city's mission, vision, values, and promoting climate-friendly policies under community and economic development, and including natural disaster mitigation and response under safe community, and also under, I believe, vibrant community and neighborhoods as well as, in order to emphasize that. So those are some edits that were suggested. And then under major efforts and initiatives, provide more specific examples as opposed to general themes and goals. And then including housing organizations in the list of whom in the state should collaborate to deal with the concerns associated with construction defect laws. And then on police reform, combining the bullet points that were discussed regarding increased crime and decreased staffing, just for awareness. We listed some resources in the slides, and with that, I'll conclude and answer any questions council may have, or give you the opportunity to discuss the edits that have been presented tonight.
Here's, let me start the conversation here on this issue. With all due respect to our state legislators, I don't think any of them read what we provide in terms of our legislative priorities. And, you know, if they do, you know, they'll pick and choose what they want to support. And so I sort of see what we submit to the legislature, first of all, keep it simple for them. And so I see that as more of a 30,000-foot document, and that many of these ideas that have been raised are very good ones, but they really go more into our strategic planning and belong at that level for how we operate ourselves, rather than what we're asking of the legislature. That's just my two cents worth on it. So with that, others thoughts on these things? Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree that keeping it sky-high, you know, our representatives are excellent, our state senator, our House representatives, they're wonderful representatives, but they are extraordinarily busy people. We think we have large briefing books, my goodness. I would think that the more strategic thing for us would be to identify, you know, those couple of things that we're really strongly passionate about, those things that will have a super tangible effect on Arvada, on how we do our business, and really try and triage what's important. And that if we have to go to bat for something, then we do that. But if these are things we can incorporate in our strategic plan, as the mayor recommends, or in other ways, then I recommend we stick to what's really important with promoting to them and not get lost in the weeds of all the things. Thanks.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I agree with you, Mayor. I think when they all, you think we worry about us coming here to make laws and do is nothing compared to what the Capitol does. You know, because of my day job, I realized how much damage they can do by just a lobbyist standing next to them. And it's always by the last word of one single person, not a community. So, you know, I think, one, we do publish it, we do share, because it's proof in the pudding that we at least put our voice out there. And, you know, I think some of them may look at it. I can't say that everyone that represents Arvada is stellar, because some of them I've never met. So, you know, it'd be hard for me to really know if they're good or not. So at least put it in their inbox. I would put it on our website to say, we sent this to all the senators to show in our state representatives that we showed that we sent it to them, so that our constituents know where we stand on some of these things. And I think your summary at the beginning is, and it's always been this way, you know, we used to have the breakfast, and I think it kind of dwindled where they never showed up. But, you know, I don't want to say we don't send this to them, because then I think then, you know, we didn't try.
Yeah, I'm not advocating not sending it. I'm saying, but let's keep it more at the 30,000-foot level.
Yeah, and I think the very beginning of it kind of talks about it's very high level. But if you want details, you know, we should continue to encourage our state representatives to look at those sections, because I think those sections are important, you know. I think right now, one that still chaps my hide, and Ken Feldman and I had this discussion on a statewide broadband call the other day, is still the right-of-way around fiber. And the, you know, the state has different rules than political subdivisions do. And there's still, maybe, I would advocate that we look at trying to change some of those in our legislative is that the city should still have more control over their right-of-way in those subjects. But I'm good with, one, I'll answer the question, the edits that are put in there, I think I'm good with, with the highlighted edits. So we better get this to them soon, because they're already creating weird bills right now. So we might as well get rolling on this. And this thing keeps going out on us.
That's just yours. All the rest of our mics are working perfect. It's just yours, Mr. Pfeifer.
No, I heard some other people over here, too, and Lisa's. If we could, I'm good with the edits, the highlight areas, I'm good with that. And then if, I'd keep it together still. If, the executive summary in the very beginning, I don't know if that's what it's called, but the summary in the front's fine. And I would put it on social media and everything else, and I'd put a link in all of our newsletters so that our constituents know, because they should also be aligned with who we represent and have them also contact, showing alignment to our strategic plan. I don't know if our citizens know that we put this together and why. So maybe we can do more of a social media blitz on our legislative agenda. So I'm good with it, the way it is.
Great.
Yeah, I'll leave it there.
Great. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. And yes, I'm good with the edits. I think the one thing that did not get included in the slides that I would like to bring up, and I think it is very appropriate, given the presentation we just had from the Sustainability Committee, and I know the legislature will be talking about and looking at opportunities to assist communities and being more resilient with these natural disasters. And so I would really like to call that out as something we want to work with our legislators on and to find more assistance in the work, like with the Sustainability Committee we was talking about. So I would like to have that more called out, if we could.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I did want to just point out is, just because we think or assume people aren't going to read a document, doesn't mean we shouldn't put our efforts in actually reading through and highlighting our priorities more rigorously, because it is shared and it is out there in the public. And I think it would be a disservice to our constituents if we didn't do those efforts and publish that with our feedback. So I think it's... that with, with our feedback. So I, I think it's important to, to review, and even if no one reads it, or two people read it, I think there's value in it. So I agree with Councilmember Pfeifer that if we can socialize that on the website and on social media, people will see that we're actually trying to emphasize our points in a collective way. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything meaningful to, to add to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so I want to add, add something here. I, I think, you know, we got to remember what the purpose of this is. This is telling the people downtown at the Golden Dome, this is the stuff we would like you to do. That's not the only place for stuff to get done. And in fact, I would submit that our most, our best position to be is to ask them to do as little as possible, because almost always, whether it be police reform or paid family medical leave, they make things worse, not better. And nothing prevents us from doing the things that fall in, under municipal jurisdiction. And I think we should be really careful with this document. You know, we're not editing this document to show our values or virtues or anything like that. This, we want to not ask them to do stuff we don't want them to do for us. Anything we can do on our own, we should do. And that's really, you know, is the, the, the core of local control and, and no mandates. It's why we exist as local government. So I wouldn't edit this document at all. If I were going to edit it, I would make it more general. I certainly wouldn't be asking the legislature to do things like sustainable building practices or thing, or development standards or anything like that, because we have the jurisdiction to do that ourselves. Just because the legislature doesn't do it, doesn't mean we can't do it. So I would be kind of careful with this document. I do, thankfully, I do agree with Mayor Williams that I don't believe the legislatures read it, and the, the ones that do, I don't think they care. But, but, but I would be real careful asking them to do stuff on our behalf unless it truly is a matter of statewide concern, because we're likely to get something that's not what we're looking for. In fact, it might, might, in most cases, be more harmful than, than helpful.
Okay, Mr. Devon, does, do you have enough information to go forward?
Well, what I think I heard is that the, the edits that were suggested seem to be okay with most of you.
That, I would agree that that's, that that's the...
Okay. So when we return on February the 7th, we will have the version that is, that was included in this packet that's dated January 12th.
Great. Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this during the five-minute? There's no one here in council chambers. Do you have anybody else signed up to speak? Okay, moving on to reports from the City Council. Again, I'll take privilege and lead off here. We have recently had two fatalities in our community that I wanted to comment on tonight. We lost Lori, Don Miller, who, Dan Miller, who has been with the Apex District as their executive director for, I believe, about six years. She did an incredible job while she was here. She worked on their projects that were voter-approved. We got some great projects. I will always have fond memories of Lori at, at various ribbon cuttings and diving into swimming pools and things of that nature for the great projects that we partnered on. She went through a horrible illness and disease, and we unfortunately lost her. We also lost someone who I considered sort of an institution in Arvada for many, many years. Dwayne Whistler was a realtor in Arvada for many years, very, very involved in the community, and was a coach, and coached many, many students in, in, as a line coach in football, and, and just was the classic individual who gave back to his community in so many ways. Sold a lot of people their first and subsequent residences here in, in Arvada, and was just a very popular individual. And so we mourn the passing of both Lori and, and Dwayne tonight. With that, Mr. Pfeifer?
Totally went blank, but there was something I needed to ask. I'll come back. I'll try to remember later.
Very good. Ms. Simpson?
Uh, yes. A quick update. Visitor Center Board held our first meeting of the year. We discussed some changes, including potentially adding new members to the board, including representation for Apex, as well as for local business community, which would be really exciting stuff, as those are huge draws in our city. I think it's going to be a really great year for Visitor Center. There's some exciting stuff, particularly if we can move past this pandemic, that would be great. And then just in addition, we heard a lot about Marshall Fire tonight. I expect we'll be discussing that for a long time. Huge just personal thank you from myself and I'm sure Councilmember Smith for the support this community delivered for the gift card drive that we did. We incorporated cities from around the metro area, and we raised roughly $65,000 so far, which was pretty amazing. But the need is still great. The nonprofit we were working with in Boulder told us that they were going through about $10,000 to $20,000 in gift cards a day for victims of the fire only. So if you are still inclined to donate, the box at the Arvada Chamber of Offices, Chamber of Commerce offices at 7305 Grandview in Old Town, we'll stay up for a couple more weeks just to get those late donations in, and they'll go to a really good cause. So please help out.
Yeah, I want to commend both Lauren and Lisa for really taking the bull by the horns on, on this issue, and really showing how caring Arvada is, and really, I think, led the entire metro area in terms of its recognition of, of the plight of our neighbors to the north. So thank you both for your, your tremendous work. Something, Lauren, you brought up that I think we need to see where the rest of council is on, is the common consumption area. Do I have thumbs up for support for moving forward with seeking that? And you have seven of us who gave you thumbs up. So if you'll work with the BID and the folks at the state and our local folks in terms of moving forward with the, it's worked very well during the pandemic, and I, I try to look at every chance we get to make some lemonade out of those lemons, and what, what we've done with Old Town and the consumption area and, and other efforts that our business community made to get through it, we should celebrate those successes and, and continue them on. Mr. Pfeifer, did you come up with what your thoughts were?
Uh, yeah, I remember now. It was around Dr. Cog. One, Lisa's first business meeting was, what, a week ago, two weeks ago? So she did great. I got in trouble for having my camera on, just so you know, because I'm an alternate now. But we did, we did talk, yeah, they told me to turn off my camera, because I was not allowed to be there anymore. But we did recognize our, our neighbors to the north, and I had made some comments and public comment about that. And, you know, I think a lot of sincerity around Dr. Cog and our, our neighbors, and they appreciated all the mutual aid, obviously. I mean, I think we gave a lot. And so, and I think that the mayors up there appreciate that, and I'm sure you've heard the same thing. That being said, speaking of, like, they didn't have a letter about Lisa being the primary representative for Dr. Cog, but they knew that in writing from, I, so I don't know if anyone didn't send it or what, but it caused some confusion. Plus Lisa crashed the executive meeting, which that caused all sorts of other things too.
Oh, boy.
For the record, Bob put me in the wrong meeting, so I think it was a prank.
Yeah, the Dr. Cog leadership was like, "Uh, something wrong with Arvada?" And I was like, "No, why?" And she goes, "Well, because there was this council member just, you know, kind of creepy in the meeting just watching us." So I was like, "Oh, no, that..." She just got the wrong meeting. So I blame the website, so.
Good.
But anyways, they do need a letter officially from us. And they might have gotten it, but they haven't been in the office, so they didn't know if it was mailed or what, but they were asking.
Well, we'll, we'll send a second letter if necessary.
If you can, email it too, since they're kind of, I think they might be going by the office now, but email would be nice.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a recognition to our stellar fire department. I have a friend who has shared a video of her neighborhood being saved by one of our fire trucks, so I just want to recognize that.
That is great. The next item we have on our agenda is the appointments to the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. That was a position previously held by Nancy Ford. Someone wish to make the motion on that? Ms. Simpson?
Uh, we're appointing Councilmember Mormon, to be correct, yes.
Yes. And then as alternate?
Yeah, Jacob Moyer?
Jacob Moyer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I move to appoint Councilmember Randy Mormon to the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council with an alternate for Jacob Moyer.
Everyone cast their votes. Very good. Mr. Marriott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And the rest of us vote yes as well, passes 7 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Mormon, for agreeing to take on this, this task. I think it's highly educational. I've served on it. Others, Mr., we've had a number of people who have done a great job on it over the years, so continue on that good tradition. With that, Mr. Devon, what do you have for us tonight?
Just one item, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have the National League of Cities Conference that's scheduled March 14th through 16th in Washington, DC. And, and early registration ends next week. I wanted to sample the city council members to see if anyone wishes to attend that conference. Councilmember Simpson is planning to attend, and we will certainly support her and get her registered and lodged. And if there's any other council members that wish to attend...
Ms. Smith is planning to attend as well.
Uh, Councilmember Smith, thank you. So besides councilmembers Simpson and Smith, is there anyone else that would like to attend?
Yeah, Mr. Devon, I would plan to attend as well.
Okay, great. All right, we will make sure we get the three of you registered. It's not the end, just that you have to pay a little extra money, and I want to be a good steward of the public.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, Ms. Morris, do you have anything?
I do not, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.